Test, test. Test, test.
I'd like to call and order the I'd like to call and order the Sephora Hill City Council meeting on Monday, July 8th, 2024. It is 6:01 PM. Ms. Hillman, could I have the roll call, please?
Ken Burgess.
Here.
Charles Pro- Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Monson.
Here.
Steve Spina.
Here.
Lance Smith. Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Matthew Maggert.
Here.
William Poe.
Okay, at this time, we're going to rise for the invocation from Pastor Fran Stubbs, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I don't see her here, so I'll go ahead and.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be able to talk about the issues in our city, to be able to contemplate the things that are coming before us. We ask you to help us to be able to show respect and reverence to each other, help us to be able to have open minds and communicate in a positive way. We ask you to bless this city, that it might be the best that it can be, and help us to be able to make the decisions that would be pleasing to you. Say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening. If you could please silence your electronics at this time, make sure I've mine are too. And we'll have a time for citizens' comments at the end of the meeting. If you have any comments that you want to make to the council, you'll have three minutes to speak. And as you come up, make sure that you state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items. And there's just one item today.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item 1.1.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve Consent Agenda Item 1.1, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to the business items. And this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. First business item, we have business item 2.1, first reading of ordinance number 1481-24, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sephora Hills, Florida, amending Chapter 155, impact fees of the City of Sephora Hills Code of Ordinances, adopting simplified land use categories within the transportation impact fee schedules, adopting a timeline and phasing for implementation of amended impact fees, adopting an updated methodology for impact fee analysis, adopting an updated impact fee study, providing for the effect of the transportation impact fee ordinance on other regulations and development orders, providing for purpose and intent, providing for definitions, providing for rules of construction, providing for findings, providing for conflict severability, providing for repealer, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I'm assuming we'll have a little conversation on this, so I think I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing and see if anybody from the public wants to speak to this item. Does anybody like to speak to this particular item? I think none. I will close the public hearing. And then I will turn over to council for further discussion.
Are we going to hear from Kim Lee Horn and Clancy?
Clancy is online, okay.
I just wanted to make sure the that the items.
That were addressed.
I have a copy that were addressed by Councilman Smith were incorporated as it looked like. I had one question about, of course, now I can't find it. I had a question about. But anyone else talking, I'll try to.
And I'll just introduce myself, yeah.
Yeah, let's just go ahead.
With Kim Lee Horn.
All right, thank you.
With me, I have Clancy Mullin with Duncan Associates. And we have, over the last month, actually had a couple of meetings with Councilman Smith and actually the city attorney, as well as City Manager Poe, in discussion with several of the discussion issues that Commissioner Smith brought up. So those have been addressed. We have submitted an updated final report. Clancy's, again, online. He could probably answer some of the more detailed. And I am here as well as as needed, so.
And while he's kind of still looking, some of the discussions were in the categories, commercial categories. And then I think we were okay on residential overall, but some of the commercial things. And it was a matter of kind of looking for some uniformity, I guess. But we had a couple of questions, so.
I've in the report on page four, updated fees and changes for the convenience store with gas pumps, it says not applicable. Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's but it says transportation is 4,200. I don't know who I'm talking to. And if I'm not mistaken, in the current ones, convenience store with gas pumps are like 30,000. Am I reading that right?
And I think that was our issue, too, was like the the gas pumps obviously create more traffic and along with the drive throughs, right? That was our kind of main issue. We were trying to huddle.
So those that went down like from 30,000 to 4,000. Is that correct? Do you need to look at?
You looking at a chart right now?
I'm looking at page four, undated, updated impact fee, table four, page four. And then on the on page two, it has the current transportation impact fees. I don't know if Bill could address. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I don't have page four, but my my understanding, Bill Burgess, building official, my understanding is they are going down, but it's from, I think, around 6,600 per pump to like a little over 4,000 a pump.
It's by pump?
It's going down, but not as much drastically as you.
As this says here?
Right. That's my understanding.
But is it going to be?
Because I ran the numbers on, I think, while on, it was it was less, but it was a couple thousand per pump, which was kind of surprising to me as well that it that went down.
But it went down. Yeah, because we were trying to, I thought we were trying to capture the larger users and create a space, a little discount for the homegrown business type thing. That's what I thought we were trying to capture.
Right, that was what we were.
We'll have to hear from Clancy. We did provide him the original study from 2015, so he worked that into this. And maybe there's with the new changes and the laws and stuff, maybe there's something in there that he can.
I'm not sure what the confusion is about exactly. You say, well, it does say convenience store with gas, in table one, the current fee, the current transportation fee is 30,000, but that's per thousand square feet. If you look at the one per pump, 6,000, convenience service station, gasoline service station, convenience market, second floor.
Oh, I see. Okay, I see. I see. All right. So it's six. It goes from 6,227 to 4,984. No, 4,4200.
Right.
Right.
Right. So it is going down somewhat, but it's it's.
And the medical office and the office are mutually different. The office.
Yeah, the office is significantly higher than the current fee. The medical office is significantly higher than the current fee.
Right.
A little bit about that, that number of trips generated. So you might have, you know, 20 people in a doctor's office, or you might have one person in the in the.
Right, but we wanted the regular office uses to be lower.
And it is.
It is.
So like if I have an insurance company, or if I have a real estate company, I'm not having as many trips as a doctor's office is having. And that's what we're.
And it's about a third.
And that's what we tried to reflect that. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're covering the items primarily that Councilmember Smith brought up.
If you look at page six of the ordinance, there's a table. And it might lay it out a little a little cleaner. So you can see that it'll show general office, 1,000 square foot is 49, you know, approximately $4,900. Medical office per 1,000 square foot is 15.
Right, yeah. And that's it's the same way in the other.
400, okay.
On page, on table four.
You know, fast food per 1,000 square foot is up to 21,000. And then the gas pumps that, you know, as you adjust some of these, it has impacts on the other uses. It's, you know, the methodology works in conjunction, so you can't really cherry pick what you're increasing without adjusting everything. But the the per gas pump amount is intended to impact the stores with the larger stores with the, you know, 12 gas pumps versus the impact of a mom and pop with one or two.
Right.
I just think that, you know, with the construction growth, we need the impact fees to help us pay the way. And I mean, a couple of these, the fast food even has gone down a little bit from current. So I just want to make sure we're going in the right direction, and we're not hitting the the mom and pops too hard. That's I guess that's what the goal is.
Yep. And we looked at that. And but as the city attorney said, you know, like as in, we have a methodology that we have to follow. So it's we added in the additional to try to separate out some land uses to be able to provide a little bit more, you know, basically efficiency, but also for some of those that should be better for the mom and pops.
Go ahead.
Sir, it looks like we're going to be implementing this over a full year period. Is that correct?
Well, I know. And Clancy, can you address that as it relates to the?
Oh, okay.
Were you in the emergency?
Yeah, because, because, yeah, because that's what we had.
Right, exceptional, extraordinary.
And that's why we had to have the two workshops to be able to accelerate.
Thank you.
And this is our second workshop?
No, we've this is actually the first.
Oh, okay, we already did the two. But this is the change. This is the first meeting after the.
This is the actual first reading. The second reading will be in two weeks.
And we did have extensive conversations about this in the first time we had met about it. So this is just trying to make sure that the things we talked about and were addressing were addressed. And according to Billy and Chris and Clancy, too, it appears that they have been addressed to what we're looking. And because of methodology, the numbers are kind of changed a little bit. So if, you know, if you guys are comfortable with what you heard and what you see, I think we probably should be able to, we could proceed on that. Because that's, like you said, we want to get it going. So we don't want we don't want to give them something more to work on and then try to start it all over again.
We want to get it going, but we want to go in the right direction.
Yeah, we want to go in the right direction, too.
And there is a little bit of timeframe, but we've we I think we've worked that in with the two workshops.
And then this would be implemented starting October 1st, is the way I read it.
No, 90 days from the passage should be October 21st.
Sometime in October.
Yeah, end of October, October 21st, I think. So it's 90 days from the passage on the second reading.
For the second reading?
Yeah.
I already did the public hearing. I did that first because I figured we'd have some conversation.
Oh, if there's no further discussion, may I move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve a business item 2.1, the transportation, public safety and park impact fees on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. All right, thank you. And this is item number two, or 3.1, I guess, right?
3.1 is a planning report.
Yeah, planning directors.
Hand that over to Rodney.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Rod Corvo, principal planner. I'd like to preface this presentation stating that this project predates the existing moratorium. This project was received by the city back in the fall of 2022. So we have, go ahead, next slide, please. Do I have the oh, I have the ability. Okay. Thanks. All right. So this is another one of those three part applications, an annexation into the city, a future land use map amendment from up to residential suburban, and then a rezoning to R3, medium density residential. Now, I just want to let you know that this application was brought to the city as an R4 with a residential urban. After the comments in the vigorous discussion at the Planning Commission, we talked with the applicants. The applicants discussed this with us and their attorney, and they went ahead and voluntarily changed their application to reduce the density to the R3 zoning designation with a residential suburban, future land use map amendment, which basically means they're going to get instead of if this is developed as a townhome project, instead of approximately 36 units, they'd be eligible for around 30, 31 units with all of the different site constraints. The project location is about 1,500 feet from the corner of Geiger and Island Boulevard. As you can see right here, some of the projects in the existing development is the Wedgewood Community down here. And then there's a mobile home, several mobile home parks over here. There are acreages in the density of approximately six units per dwelling acre in those existing developed portions. Now, there's a significant amount of open space in larger lots of developed and undeveloped properties as well. And I think that's what we really took into consideration when we went back and reviewed this R4 that was reduced to the R3 zoning proposal. Issues identified with this particular project, it's heavily wooded. So we will, and we can talk more about this when we get to the staff recommendations, but a maximum of 50% of trees are typically allowed to be removed according to that section in the code if they're over six inches or larger caliber for the grand or for the protected trees. Now, a tree survey has not been completed, to my knowledge yet, on this property. But when it is presented at the time of development, if the council chooses to annex this property into the city and to develop it, we'll review that with the applicant. And we're putting in there as a condition that we, as staff in the applicant, applicant's representative or arborist walk that property to see if we can identify some trees to potentially save on the site. Condition of Geiger Road. So this was a major concern when this application came into the city. We, as staff, worked with the Pasco County, the MPO, some of their support staff and their consultants. I know the mayor and some council members also. We actually got out on that road and walked that road almost the entire length. That road, we were adamant that needs a full depth reclamation. The county at first gave us some resistance, but after they walked it, they agreed as well. And so it's my understanding, and we've put that into the staff report, into the staff attachments, that the the county has budgeted this roadway improvement for the 2025, the next fiscal year. Okay? And some of those improvements, as I said, would be the full depth reclamation, road widening, so not only the actual road, but they're talking about extending slightly on the side. So there's a shoulder along the side of the road, lighting, and then trail slash sidewalk. And the developer has offered their assistance with doing some type of trail. Now, the roadway, excuse me, the right of way is very constricted in some areas out there. So the trail would only be able to be put on one side. And I believe that would probably be the north side of the roadway. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? So you're talking about a trail of some sort from Island to 301?
From Island back over here, correct, to 301. Yes, yes, Councilman.
I'd walk a trail.
Correct. It's probably more than likely going to be a sidewalk because of the constraints right away. But absolutely, we're advocating there's a lot of people walking along that road now. So when the developments come in, again, if you choose to annex this in, if this is developed, there's going to be more development and more pressures along that roadway. So that's why this project has sat, not sat, but we've been working on it for almost two years now.
Rodney, real quick, like on the road, and maybe we haven't gone that far yet, but what type of road? I mean, I think about a sidewalk there. It's going to have to be right up, basically, almost right up to the road. So will it be something similar to what we did with Simons Road, where it'll have the curbing, and then the sidewalk would be kind of like, or the trail kind of like right close to the road like that?
Well, it would have to be, you are correct, it's going to have to be right up along the roadway, which unfortunately, it doesn't have as much of a buffer between the the travelings and then where the pedestrians are. I wouldn't want to comment as far as
Yeah, I mean, we may not be that far down the road on it, but.
Yeah, but we can, we can talk with the county to see.
I mean, that might be consideration. And I think that also gives a slight illusion of a like a traffic calming, because people, if there's a curb alongside, they have a tendency to not maybe go as fast. You know what I mean? It's just sort of like that, just a visual thing.
As a walker, and many of you see me out walking on my lunch break every day, I can attest to the fact that it does not feel as safe when you don't have that space or when you don't have that curb to know that if a car does happen to careen out of control, that you've got at least you've got that curb that's there.
Something, right.
I agree.
Okay, all right.
Definitely. I've noted that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, President. Another issue that we've identified, and this kind of folds into the larger scheme of things that we're working on as staff and as the city, is the intersection of Gaul and Geiger is a hotspot. Now, there is right of way that's constrained there by the ABC, but we are walking, excuse me, yeah, we actually are walking some of these hotspots next week with Kim Lee Horn on Wednesday afternoon to look at those hotspots that you all approved back a couple months ago. And we're going into the design phase of this. So it's the next part of that. So this intersection is on the the top priority. And we understand that this is going to overlap several entities. We've got city, we've got county, and then we've got the FDOT as well. So as you all understand, in this room, the projects are getting a little more complicated, right? So it's going to entail a little more time, a little more effort between staff and the city and all the different entities. But we have identified that, and we are working forward on that. Okay?
This is really for council. I brought this up with the city manager when I talked about this project. I think that when we have our budget workshop later this month, funding for that hotspot has to be put into the budget, or this condition is goes away. So I think we need, they're going to start working on, but we need to fund that hotspot.
About this, so that one particular hotspot or hotspots in general?
Well, I'm talking right now specifically this one.
Okay.
Because it's a condition of the project that we're going to improve that intersection. And if we don't, then the people who live there are not going to be are not going to have the ability to access the roads like we're going to be promising if we approve this project. So my recommend, I'll bring it up during the workshop, but this this hotspot in particular has to be funded in order for all this to work.
Is there some, yeah, is there something with that? Like, because like Rodney said, that's, you know, we're talking about FDOT county and city all together.
We're not to coordinate it and get funding hopefully from FDOT 2, but.
Right, that's what I was saying, is where it's, you know, kind of like we did with 56 and somebody other project we've done where, you know, we sort of. Well, yeah, 54, but I'm talking about even with 56, you get a four lane, we put money into that that we got back once on development thing, so.
But we didn't approve a project based on that. That was something that we, it wasn't continued.
Saying that.
I understand. It's something.
This is, we'll have to bring it up at the budget workshop. I think it's a reality.
Absolutely. Excuse me.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are you finished with your presentation?
No, not yet. I wanted to just say that that wasn't a particular recommendation of, would you like me to be?
We interrupted you.
No, I interrupted you.
I can be.
I'm sorry.
What was I going to say? We as staff are not particularly recommending as a condition of approval that that particular hotspot gets done. I want to make sure you all, if you want to condition it, that's that's within, but we're not as staff.
I understand, but we're saying we're going to improve the road. We're going to put and make sure sidewalks are there. We're going to do that intersection. So I think it's on us.
Sure, okay.
To say that to the residents that already live there and the new residents that want to move there, that we're going to continue to improve that area and that intersection as part of a recognition of what the the impacts growth is having on these roads. But we'll do that at the budget meeting. I'm sorry I interrupted, but.
That's okay.
All right.
Before I go on, does anybody else have any other questions?
I do when you're done.
Okay.
You're done.
All right, let's see. So next. All right, so just some formalities. It's the annexation. It's within the utility service area. It meets Florida statutes for annexation and development. The future land use residential suburban, I already established, that's reflective of the area right now. And then the R3 zoning, staff feels is reflective also for the the potential development that could take place on the site. Okay? Compatibility, well, I just kind of said most of that stuff. Public service analysis, water, it's already been factored into our existing water use permit. However, there's a condition that you'll see at the end of the slide that covers us again on that. It is a de minimis threshold, if anybody's wondering, because it is a smaller, it's a 30, 31 unit townhome project that's proposed at this point, if you choose to move forward with this. It does not require a left or right turn lane. Okay?
I could suggest.
Sure.
Don't use yellow again.
I was going to say the same thing.
You can't read it.
Duly noted.
Duly noted.
All right. And then SPRC recommended approval back in May 2024, Planning Commission, June 18th, the conditions. And then Planning Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. I don't normally put this many words on a PowerPoint. Water, we're covering ourselves as far, and just to make sure that if in the future, water is not available, we're making no guarantees at certificate of occupancy time. Roadway improvements, we already talked about that. Sideway, sidewalk improvements. And then tree preservation, we already talked about that one as well.
Well, can you go into that a little deeper?
Absolutely.
So we have in the code, tree, section 7.06.04, treatment removal guidelines. And I have talked to Todd, with Todd, about a a table we have in there that allows a certain percentage of trees. So this meets that that chart where you're allowed to take 50% of if it's over 40 trees. So that's what you had mentioned in your.
Now, this is good enough for planning purposes. And that's why I said, I think I used some kind of language typically can be removed. So as I said, there wasn't a tree survey done yet on this. It's a little premature at this point because this is just the annexation stage. So from an area, my my observation is that it looks like there's 40 or more per acre out there. Okay? So that's why I kind of put that in there. So there's notes in that tree preservation area, as you discussed, that with with that, that's the maximum that they can take. There are some other extenuating circumstances within that section of the code, that if there are areas that need to be removed, that then they have to pay additional fees for the tree mitigation fund. But I want to make sure to the council that we as staff, and that's why I put that in there for the for the recommendations, for the condition, that we'll physically go out there and see what we can save out there, because we know that that is a source of consternation with this council and with our community. And being a fellow Maynor, I appreciate trees as well. So I'm all for trees. All right?
Thank you, Rodney. So in this presentation, not this one, but the one, the documents that are attached to to the
Yes.
to the packets that we received, on the site plan sketch provided by the applicant, it indicated 36 units per acre.
Correct.
Then on the site plan information prepared by staff, page 109 of 209, indicated the dwelling units per acre to be 31. Then the section of the report entitled Proposed Development on page 12 of 208 indicates 29 dwelling units per acre. But the surrounding developments have six units, six dwelling units per acre, which would be 25 units. So we should probably have one, one document. And here's my concern is that when we look at these, and I get it, that this is a preliminary sketch, but when we look at these preliminary sketches, there's no way that they could have gotten an R4. Once you take away the space required for the retention, the 50% of the trees, and you talked about extenuating circumstances, but those are not required, those are requested. And. are not required, those are requested, and, and these are, and we keep it a two-story building, and they get all the parking spaces, I think it's very difficult to meet that, you know, there, no one's gonna get fourteen units per acre or twenty units per acre when we look at that kind of guideline. So when I look at these space plans, when I look at these, you know, schematic layouts, there doesn't appear to be any consideration made for saving any of these grand oaks. Like, all the roads are straight, and there's minimum setbacks, and, you know, I'm just wondering how realistic we're approving this, but, you know, I'm concerned that if we say yes to this, this, and, and the improvements don't happen before the, before the development is completed, then we're, we're creating a situation that's way worse than it already is. I've already had calls from residents from Wedgewood and those who live around Geiger Road and say, if you, if you approve these, it only exacerbates our situation. So how do we address that?
Well, thank you for pointing that out, and there's some inconsistencies in the report due to last-minute jockeying from the planning commission meeting to the, this council meeting. There was a couple of weeks, and it was during that time that we had the discussions with the developer and the developer's applicant to reduce the zoning and the future land use map amendment proposal. So originally thirty-six, I always am careful, I may have failed to do that on this particular one. I put for illustrative purposes only, because those are just bubble plans, those are such very initial, there's been zero, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been no engineering on that, not that we're aware of, okay? So I will point out that it is in the basis of special concern as well. The applicant is aware of that, so that further reduces the amount of units that you're actually gonna get on there, because you need to expand your drainage. But yes, for the, I'll take responsibility also for the inconsistencies, if they're thirty, I don't know, I mean, thirty could be thirty, thirty-one units at that point with the R three, but that's why, is because when I removed the language from the original staff report, it had thirty-six, and then, you know, life gets in the way sometimes.
It's okay, I just, it's just that those numbers were changing, and I thought, what I really like for us to see is, you know, commensurate with the other developments in the area, but we understand that the R three is seven point five units per acre.
I had written down twenty-nine townhomes, but I have another question. Are you through?
Yeah, that, no, that was, that was all my comments, thank you.
All right, well, you know, you brought up another good point, was how is this project schedule, construction schedule gonna be timed with the Geiger Road schedule? So we can't have the project come online before the road is done. So how is that gonna be coordinated between the city, the county, perhaps the state, and then the contractor and the developer?
That's another good question. So at this point, we have indication from the county that they've committed to putting the funds in for the next fiscal year to begin the project. When that happens, I, I don't know, I wouldn't even wanna speculate on that. So I could tell you that if, let's just say, for a scenario, if you all chose to move forward with this, with indicating to staff in the city attorney to move forward with this, to bring it to the next council meeting, it has to go through the process, and then it has to go through the actual site development process, which is another eight to nine months at the minimum. So we're talking potentially a year to fourteen months before you had a shovel in the ground. Now, I'm not gonna commit, again, to as far as with the county. I don't know if there's a way to condition this to dovetail, but again, as I said earlier, the projects are getting a little more complicated. So that's a good point, because what we wouldn't want to happen is for the, the units to be built out, and then Geiger Road hasn't been completed yet. I understand.
Got it. And the reason I brought that up was, some of the emails between Todd and the county weren't the most reassuring of emails from the county side, at the beginning of time, okay? You have them, do, okay.
Okay. Yeah, as of late, oh, sorry, Todd Vanderburg, planning director for the city, as of late, the latest correspondence I've had with Pasco County is that it's on, on the docket to begin construction beginning of the upcoming calendar year. Now, there, there's some things that they're still working through, and I was gonna get into some, some more of the details when I did my presentation, but I'll share them now, is, is yes, it's on the schedule, that's what we've been told, it's been put in writing. They need to do a survey, and they're working on getting that survey done, so they can know exactly where that road is gonna sit. And that's the other reason why we're not able to, to get more information. But once we know where the survey, the road's gonna go, then we can also begin looking at the sidewalk slash multipurpose trail and where that can fit in. But, you know, from everything we've been told, and they, they seem to be serious, not only MPO staff, but the public works department, and even above them, they seem to be on board, so that, that's all we can share, is what we've been informed by the county, and guarantee we're gonna, we're gonna stay on them staff. The mayor will continue to press the issue and make sure it stays on the schedule. So yeah, that, that's the timetable. They, they told us they plan to begin working on the project as early as January this coming year.
Can I ask you a question while you're here? These illustrative purposes-only plans that are shown in these projects, no engineering's been done, are, why are they always shown at the highest end use, that we're all already being assured won't be done?
Yeah, I mean, it's for illustrative purposes, and that's typically what's gonna happen, but until you do, as Rodney indicated correctly, is until you do that preliminary engineering, which generally they don't wanna incur that expense until they know if it's gonna be, in this instance, annexed into the city to incur that cost. So I, I think they, they show something conceptually, we usually will ask, we, we kinda wanna know conceptually what they are proposing as part of our review and preparing the data and analysis for our staff report to, to understand that. But yeah, again, it's for illustrative purposes only until they do that final design, or at least preliminary design engineering. It's kinda where, where we're at usually with that.
I think it's to also, you know, provide council with an idea of what is gonna be proposed. Whether it's gonna be exactly that based on the engineering, you know, that's, that's to be determined, but generally, the goal is build something similar to what they're proposing. Thank you.
For me, I have several issues with this whole project. I know that the, that our water department, our utilities department, said that the city has sufficient, sufficient water under the current water use permit, which, very apprehensive about that. And we're working currently on getting a new water permit, and we're not even, we haven't even finished that. And then another issue that I have, that is one of the worst roads in the city. We've been working on trying to get that thing taken care of for years. And like you said, you, they can tell us that it's gonna be done in the next budget year, but, I mean, for me, I, it doesn't make any sense to, to move forward on a project when that road is so bad, it can't even handle the traffic that's on it now. It's one of the worst roads in the city. So for me, I'm, I think we're putting the cart before the horse even thinking about this project. And we, we're still working on a water use permit that's probably, we're gonna have to start another one after that. So, I mean, I have serious issues with this. That's my major ones, the traffic. I mean, if you've tried to drive down that street between three and six, I mean, you can wait at that one light four, five times before you can get to make a right or a left. I mean, that's just me. I mean, I don't know where the rest of the council is, but you know, we've been dealing with this traffic issue for a while, and we're trying to get it fixed, but by adding more to the problem, to me, I just don't see how that's moving forward on, on us getting, and this is nothing against what you guys have done. You guys do a great job, believe me. This is nothing personal against our planning department. This is just me who drives around town all the time like all of our good citizens, and I'm sure they get just as upset about the traffic as we do. So that's my issues on this project.
Well, I just, just to sort of, I think it's important to understand that we, when, when I ran for city council six years ago or five years ago, traffic wasn't on the list of things that bothered people. But this time, when I went walking door to door, people said, stop cutting down the trees that provide all of us oxygen. Please stop raising all of these, you know, properties to, to build multifamily housing. Please don't approve any more high-density housing when, you know, when the roads do not support, you know, what we have now. I, I'm less concerned about a thirty-one unit townhome. I think we do need that middle-market housing, but the, but the next project is significantly more. And they're also, you know, and it's also dumping property, it's dumping people out onto Geiger Road. So for me, I think it's irresponsible to approve a development if we don't have a guarantee and a timeline from the county. Whether we make the improvements, the city of Zephyr Hills makes the improvements, or whether the county makes the improvements, or whether it's a partnership, I think that those, those things should be in place before they break, break ground or before they are able to sell the product. I don't know. Feels harsh, but, you know, we, we are getting the message loud and clear. I think we all are.
I think you're kinda getting on to something there, too. It's, it's not like, for instance, this particular project doesn't warrant a turn lane, but it's a cumulative effect of that one, the next one, and other ones around there that create a, a big problem, and, which is why we hit, got the hotspots and everything. So that is something to consider. Another thing to consider, at least for the residents in the area, is, and I believe it's not the applicant's intent for this to be a rental community. It's supposed to be, you know, homeownership basically, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Right. That's, that's what I understand it to be, too. My, I guess my question on that is, and I don't even know if we can even do this, but how, how do we, you know, almost guarantee that? So like, we could be partway through this project, and somebody might come in and say, hey, I wanna give you whatever and, and take that project over, and they'd wanna make it a rental. How, how do we, how do we keep it what we're looking for it to be? Because, you know, we have in the city, in CRA district, a homeownership grant process that we, we understand that people that own the home are, you know, participating in the community and, you know, so on. So, and that's kinda what I think the people that live there wanna see, that same, that same type of resident.
You're right. There is nothing that would not allow an applicant to do that, meaning if they developed it and then decided to rent it. So the applicant could address that if they would like.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming there'll be HOAs and stuff, and I don't, and I don't know the legalities of all that, but I don't know if an HOA would, could, you know, like a certain percentage have to be homesteaded properties or whatever the case may be.
We've worked on townhome projects that were going to be fee simple, and then they were changed to rentals, so.
Right, and, and I think that's a concern for the residents, and I don't know, within HOA, like I said, legally wise, if you can, like, make a certain percentage of them have to be homesteaded properties or something, none of where, so we can kind of go back and tell the people, no, these are gonna be, you know, residences, it's not gonna be a rental, rental-type property. I guess, I don't know, Matt?
I would defer to that.
Will have a better question on that.
So my understanding of the question is, can we put a condition on that these can't all be rental properties, like some of the developments are? I mean, if the developer consented to that, that would be a lot easier question to answer, but for us to require it, I would wanna do some research to make sure we're not.
Okay, right.
Frenzied on any property rights.
Right. Yeah, I understand. And I, like I said, I, you know, I understand applicant, that's, that's not the intention, but I'm looking out for the, the whole long-term thing, not just what we have in front of us right now, so.
Oh, that, we've definitely put restrictions in and required certain deed restrictions to be put in place for developments. The ones I'm thinking off the top of my head were PUDs, though, so let me, I can get you an answer to that.
Okay.
And get back to you. I don't wanna.
Okay.
Just shoot from the hip on that and tell you the wrong thing.
Right. Mayor, do you have comments?
That's okay.
There's a microphone.
We're mic sharing. So, you know, this, these two projects came before planning commission, and yes, we had lots of discussion over this, for sure. This particular project does have at the backside of it, a lot of it is rental, those on that back street, just to let you know, just, just this one. And I think the planning commission bottom line came down to, because in the county, this is rez nine, it would be higher density if the county allowed this to go in. So, I mean, we came down to the fact that we felt strongly that we would rather have that say, and how many trees come out and everything else, than the county come out. So that's kinda how, how it came out with the planning commission on this one, because as you know, the county doesn't have as stringent sometimes as we do. So, but yeah, the, the same things that you guys have talked about were things that were brought up, for sure, so.
May I ask you a question? Was it a unanimous?
So we only had four people there, okay, so.
How many do you normally have, five or six?
We usually have seven.
Okay.
But there were only four people there, and so it was three one. So I don't know what it would have been, but bottom line, it came down to, this is, we're not, with this, we weren't, we weren't approving the plan, we were approving the annexation. And that was where we were very clear, that we were approving an annexation, not the plan. So that's where we came to, okay?
And, and I mean, I think that's kind of what we could do, because we, we'll have already an open question that, you know, city attorney's gonna look into for me on, on one question I had, and then you guys had other concerns that, that made a lot of sense, too. And then, again, it's not just, you know, we're looking at this project right now for annexation, but we got, we're thinking about all the projects that are going in the city at the same time, so.
I wanna clarify that. When you're looking at it for annexation, the rezoning goes along with that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's why we're.
Rezoning.
R three, not happy with R four, so that was why.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll just remind the council that this is the planning director's report, so whatever questions that we can't answer, like we have got one for the city attorney, anything else that you'd like us to address, if you want us to move forward, we can address it between tonight and the next time we meet.
May I? How, the piece of property that they want annexed in, how, how, how large is that piece of property?
It's a little bit of four acres, four point one, four point one acres.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one, I just wanna go back then, and how do we tie the road and the project development together on this and the other one? How do we do that? Matt, is there a way to?
That's difficult to do, because it's not a road, it's a county road. Yeah, I think, I think our.
And I guess we, we could say they don't get a certificate of.
I, I just suggesting throughout there, if you decide to go forward with at least the first reading of the ordinance where we can flush that issue out, what I, I'm happy to do, and will do, is reach out to the, the public works director and the MPO staff and express the comments that have been brought up. They know we have a couple of projects that are being looked at, and we, we could see if there's an opportunity, if we could work out, establish an interlocal agreement, or like a developer's agreement, but an interlocal agreement between the city and Pasco County, to sort of nail down that timetable that staff is sharing with you, that we've been told. And so that, that's something we could be proactive in and, and try to get them to commit to. And I think it sounds like, again, from, you know, they're kinda same process timetable that we're at with our budgets, so I think they got a pretty good idea where their priorities are, and, you know, we, we think they're shooting us straight. They, they walked the whole corridor, and they, they've been an advocate for us. I think the mayor knows what, how important they're taking this, so we, we feel pretty comfortable, but understand the questions, comments brought up, and we could try to get something maybe formalized in writing from them, sort of committing to that timetable. We, we could certainly do that, i- if this moves forward prior to the first reading of the ordinance.
And I'm not as worried about this one as the next one. I mean, traffic-wise, density-wise, and all that, so.
If the, if the developer, in order to comply with the tree ordinance, ended up with twenty-eight units, I, I don't have a problem with that, because I don't think that's gonna really kind of break, this, it won't be the straw that breaks the camel's back. It's, it's the larger developments, the one adjacent to this property, and then the one that's across the street and down, you know, further west. one that's across the street and down, you know, further west, tho- those are, those are the ones that I, I just can't, in good conscience, approve those, because there's no way to ensure that they're going to be safe on those roads.
And Rodney, did you say this particular project is in abeyance of special concern?
That's correct.
Which probably is going to impact on how many units anyways, right?
That's correct.
Because, like I said, we don't have any engineering on it, so.
Yes, sir.
It certainly won't go up. It can't go up anyways, but I mean, it certainly won't be increased.
That's correct. Typically, you know, when developers look at sites and potential, they, they do a max and, and, but they know that they're not going to always get that maximum amount.
And, and, and so Wedgewood, which is probably the closest density-wise project there, well, I guess some of the, a lot of the mobile home parks, too. So they're, they're 6.
6 per acre.
6 per acre. We're looking at a max of 7.5 right now. Probably will hit closer to the 6, honestly, by the time they're done, like you were saying. You know, and then, as you stated, too, that if it had remained, you know, county, it could have been even more, so. The road thing is a big, although I hate to old monkey wrench in there, but i- in my mind, I'm thinking, boy, I'd like to have that project done, then you don't have a bunch of cement trucks and trust, trucks and things going up and down the road while it's being developed, goodness. But we really, we need to do something with that road. I think that is important, and it's done probably first. So I think you're looking for a, a recommend, approval with conditions. Now, we sort of added a couple, I guess, conditions here with the road thing and the...
Right there, yeah.
So, yeah, those there, but also what we spoke about tonight. So if we approve tonight, it would, it would be those, and then also what we've, the couple of things we spoke about.
Yep, and we'd move forward with the city attorney to draft the ordinance.
Tonight, what, what we're looking for is a direction that we want to move, move forward, and are those two things that you mentioned, are you more requiring those to be conditions, or to be conditions if, if we can do something like that? If not, still move forward with the first reading, or?
Yeah, we're, what we're asking, what you're asking us to do is make a motion to bring this back for a formal.
Formal hearing, correct.
Hearing on annexation and rezoning. That's all.
Yeah, I don't know that we need a motion, we just need direction, so general consensus that move forward with your comments.
Okay.
So if I could, could you clarify for us, so the staff recommendation conditions are water, roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, tree preservation, and then we talked about ensuring that the, that the units are fee simple. What was the, what was the last one?
All of the road, just the road situation, trying to coordinate.
Okay, so that's on, yeah.
So that's kind of on there.
Right.
It's just a matter of, you know...
Maybe getting something in writing from the county.
And then the hotspot thing we're going to bring up is a count at the budget meeting, not here.
Right, right.
It's not here.
So do we have a consensus?
That's more prioritize that hotspot in our internal list.
Our budget talks, right.
So the council, you know, have a consensus on, on that?
I'm not good with it, but...
I, I'm all right with bringing it forward for more discussion and...
Okay. The discussion, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, council. Mayor.
All right.
At a 3 to...
No, it was just...
It's a consensus. Yeah, it's a majority consensus, I guess. Yeah, but basically.
Do we continue considering it with those, the condition?
These are things that, I mean, they're already in the pipeline. These have been approved before by staff. They've already been brought to staff, all the way through.
Correct.
So, I mean, it, it puts us in a position of...
Well, I think, I think, like, move forward with the, you know, with the discussions, like we're talking about, so.
I guess, remember, we talked about R9 and...
In this case...
They couldn't get that many.
Yeah, in this case, the zoning and everything, it'll be less impact on the road than if it stayed in the county.
I think that's an important, important part that the planning commission pointed out.
Okay, are we through with the...
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go on, we'll go on to 3.2, and Rodney didn't get the chance to do his mic drop before he left, but we got you, Rodney.
We got you, right.
Okay, well, the next item, we're going to provide a planning report, we're going to jump right across the street for another small petition that's been submitted for annexation, future land use map amendment, rezoning. And you can see the property on the, the screen there, it's only the area in red that we're referring tonight, as far as that petition. There's a lot of similarities between this item and the one you just heard of across the street and north side of Geiger Road. They're kind of similar in size, they're both about Geiger Road, and same owner, same representative, and both have a lot of similar elements that, from a staff review and coordination effort, that are being dealt with in a very similar manner. So this, this is, this, this petition is for 3 acres on the south side of Geiger Road that you can see. It has a single-family residence on it, and is intended to be connected to a 20-acre parcel that's to the south, and it's, it's intended for a fee simple ownership, two-story townhome project. And, so yeah, tonight, we're just looking at the 3 acres that's highlighted on the map. I, I do apologize, there were some inconsistencies in my staff report where I did refer to 4 acres versus 3 acres, but I'll get that corrected, so the final staff report will reflect a correct acreage on that. With that, they're proposing annex, of course, we look at Florida statutes criteria, 171, just like the last project, for the annexation. It meets the criteria, the Florida statutes for annexation criteria. I also mentioned this property is located within the city's JPA. That's the joint planning area and utility service area. We, we always look at that when we're looking at annexation, needs to be part of the JPA. All right? I also note, like the last project, this, again, is a petition that was submitted to the city prior to the city's moratorium on residential projects, wanted to be clear on that, so, similar to the last project. So we're proposing a, a future land use map amendment to the property. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the county's future land use, same thing over here, very valid point, it's Res 9, so if it develops in the county, it could go up to 9 units per acre, and we'd have no control over that. And the city's residential suburban is the proposed future land use, and it's a small-scale plan amendment, it's under 50 acres, so it's a simpler, local process, not being a large-scale like some of the other ones with larger, over 50 acres. So the RS is the same future land use that joins the 20-acre parcel that you see in red immediately to the south, and the res, the RS, future land use classification, again, allows for only a maximum of 7.5 units per acre. Go ahead.
In that red area, that's in the city already.
Correct.
And that's zoned R4 now?
R3. It was...
It shows R4 on the county.
Talked about, you know, we, there's some confusion on that, but we did confirm, we found the ordinance where it is RS on the future land use, but R4 on the zoning map, but we did some research on that, and it was even before I got here, we found the ordinance that it is actually R3. So I just want to, for the record, I was going to bring that up, but thank you for bringing that up. We did clarify that, and we have, city manager Billy Poe actually found the ordinance that references that. Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to reflect that in, in my report. Again, the city's director has indicated water supply is available to service the proposed development. It's, this project was listed as part of the Q and in the SWF MUD list of projects that we submitted to the Water Management District. We looked at it from a compatibility standpoint. We, we analyzed, similar to the last project, that some of the different units that were brought up, Wedgewood's to the west, there's a mobile home park even at a higher density than Wedgewood to the north, and, and then if you go a little further down the road, y'all probably remember the Silver Oaks Village, there, there's townhomes that are part of that. So this is an area of infill development for the city with a variety of that mid-level density range that, that we're seeing in that area. At the planning commission meeting, I, I think a, a lot of comments were brought up. The mayor brought up a lot of these comments, but I, for the record, I, I wanted to put them in the record for my report as well. And, and there's a lot of discussion by staff, the planning commission, and some residents that showed up for this meeting. And as you've heard, water and traffic were, I would say, the priority comments that were received by the, the property owners and discussed by staff. We, we've talked about the water and where we're at, the Water Management District permit and, that we're able to provide, at least where we stand right now. The traffic and road conditions, we, we've talked about a lot already tonight. Again, Geiger Road, I, I won't bring up any more of the discussions on that, but we hit that pretty hard on this project as well. You know, just a few more points, adding to what Rodney's already added, that safety edge, we're trying to acquire some additional safety funds that are available, not only for a safety edge that would make it no longer where you have a drop-off, but then also to include some RPMs, they call them, little dots along the edge of the road that keep you even from getting close to the edge of the road, so we're looking at safety measures to make that road as safe as possible. And, and the other thing we're looking at, the applicants willing to work with us once we get that survey done, to look at the, at a sidewalk, multipurpose trail opportunity, most likely on the north side of Geiger Road. The Silver Oaks cottages project is going to have trail on the north side. Other bookend at 301 in Geiger has a trail on the north side, so if we can work with the developer and the builder of this future project, if this goes forward, we can try to get that connection of that trail all the way up to this project. We'd also like to look at a signalized crosswalk, so these people that live, if this goes forward, have an opportunity to safely get across, and we know how, the speeds that they travel on there, so we're already talking with, trying to obtain some additional safety dollars to put a signalized crosswalk. The other thing we talked a lot about, and to points made earlier about this project on the prior item, yeah, there's, you know, probably around 160 units going in here, but what we really like about what the applicants agreed to even is, especially with this new opportunity with what we're talking about tonight, is an additional access on to Geiger Road. You already have Wilson Drive that they'll also connect to, so you have 2 in-and-outs off of Geiger Road to help distribute the traffic from the development, but what we really like and are excited about is the connection of this project to 14th Avenue, which you can see on the diagram here. 14th Avenue is that street that runs along the north side of West Elementary. We, yeah, thank you, Lori. Here, here you can see the, the proposed plan of West Elementary, I'll go off topic just for briefly this slide, but you can see a lot of issues that we had on 14th Avenue and First Street with traffic getting bogged down, with the big new driveway here with the cul-de-sac at the end on the far west side, all that's going away. So we're very excited to see that improvement, that'll address that issue. I know it's been a problem for the police department for some time, and, and you can see on the upper left-hand corner that connection to 14th Avenue. To further support the, the applicant that's here tonight, they've also had discussions with the Pasco County School District, and the city did the same thing, and they're in agreement to have the right-of-way that's already there in that area in yellow that would be deeded over to the city. The rest of it in the middle is already in the city, but for whatever reason, I don't know, the area in pink also needs to be deeded to the city. It's for the county, it's kind of a mixed bag there, I'm not sure how that happened, but the intent there is to have all that dedicated for city public right-of-way. So, again, off-topic a little bit, we're not talking about the development tonight, but that'll provide people, in my mind, if you're going south on 301, you're not even going on Geiger Road, you're probably going to go out this way to get the First Street or, or head on over to 301. And for people that are living there, especially if they have kids, you'll have a, a road that you can get to 14th Avenue along with a sidewalk to get kids safely to the project. So it's very unique to have this opportunity of, of 3 in-and-outs for development. I, I've heard the comments have been made on Geiger Road, it's operating at probably a level of Service A or B, which is very good. Yeah, there's issues on the road, safety issues, we got truck traffic that's on there, and we talked about trying to better enforce that, but, but from a level of service standpoint, it's operating at a very favorable level of service, and we think with the number of in-and-outs on this, as proposed on this project, if it were to go forward, that, that level of service shouldn't be deterred, even when you throw, i- if the other projects come on board with Geiger Road, too. And, and again, with the emphasis of getting that individual right turn lane at, at Geiger Road and 301 is the, the key that we want to work on. We talked about the hotspots, we, I won't get, get back into that. At the planning commission, the, the applicant also talked about some of the Wedgewood residents that were there, some of the larger, single-family lots, and the applicant agreed to play, play a special emphasis on the perimeter screening and buffering, especially there along the west side there, where, you know, it, it's fairly close to, to Wedgewood. They're, they're, they're pushing back the, the rear setbacks of those units. If we can go back to the slide, it shows the... You can see we've, the applicant has actually pushed back where we got about 30 feet. A lot of times you'll have 10 feet on the rear setbacks, and you got to sometimes even include the, the buffering in that. Here we got 30 feet, so we got some room to work to really make a nice screening and perimeter landscape buffer to, to help buffer those Wedgewood residents. We talked about that. Tree preservation, same thing, yes, there's trees on the site, same comments, I, I won't reiterate all those, but the applicant's aware, they're here, they're hearing the comments and concerns about tree preservation. I think we've addressed all the comments that were made by the, at the planning commission with the residents. With that, the, the site plan review committee and the planning commission also recommended approval of this item. I'd recommend that we go forward with the first reading of the ordinance. I had a couple recommendations, but same conditions as the last one, but I think with a few tweaks on those to, to ramp them up a little bit, and then I'd, again, as mentioned to start off, I'm, I'd like to reach out to the county and see if we can formalize an understanding to the concerns that have been raised tonight about Geiger Road. The applicant and his representative are here, I'll try to answer questions, but they're also here to, to answer questions that you might have.
Okay, well, so a lot of the same questions and concerns, just as you stated, will be the same here as what we just discussed, all the same things. I think the, the access on 14th Avenue was imperative for this project. I mean, I just think that's going to be, you know, for sure, something we're looking for, and I think those 3 points of access are going to be better, too. Something budgetary-wise that we need to consider, we always talk about the water and the traffic, but we need to think about our, our, our law enforcement, our police, because we're adding a significant amount of residents. So we have to be considered that we need, may need more police officers, once another police officer becomes another car, and so there's budgetary concerns we need to consider as a lot of the stuff moves forward, too. So it is, we didn't go over that the first time, but I just wanted to bring that up, so.
And, and part of the pro, part of the discussion, when you annex, when you annex and build residential, you know, you're, you're, we're lucky if we break even when we add the police and, and all that, so. And, you know, of course, this is one of those plans that I don't like, but, you know, it, it shows along the east side a lot of open land, but is that planned for parkland, or how is that going to be treated? Or is there going to be any kind of recreation space there? And, you know, we mentioned the trees, but, I mean, these 2 lots are, it looks like aerials, they're 100% covered.
Yeah, again, I, I almost hesitant to show an illustrative rendering, because, again, it, it could look a lot different. Try to answer your question, yeah, a lot of opportunity for open space, recreational, tree preservation along that east side, as you can see, again, with this conceptual rendering. We, we think there's some other locations, too, and, and again, yeah, once we, if this goes forward, we'll work with the arborist, with the landscape architect, try to walk the site and just get creative on where, how we can maximize tree preservation. And to your other point that was made, I, I sat in, of course, with the department head meetings on the budgets, and we, I talked with the city manager about the hotspots, not only... Not only are we proposing, you'll see and hear about this if you haven't already, but we're proposing a lot of money to not only design and engineer, but then for the first year and then coming up the following year to actually budget a similar or more amount to actually construct these projects. So we're, we're looking at the traffic side of things very comprehensively and proactively.
Thing I've been thinking about that I talked about with, I think, you. You know, the project we looked at, at the last meeting, the hospital site, that's on a corner that has two other sites developing. So there'll be three properties there that are all in the works for development. They're all apartments or townhomes. These projects and plus when you add Silver Oaks Village, I'm wondering if there's a way we can try to get ahead of the, of the problem a little bit by doing maybe many regional traffic plans that look, let's look at what the potential is for Geiger Road development. What do we need at both ends? How can we improve the traffic? Because we're going to need to do something probably at Island Boulevard as well.
Yes.
And the same thing at the hospital site. And, and we know there's going to be, they're talking about turn lanes, but we know, and you're talking about a roundabout, but there's also going to be other developments there. And all that's going to feed into either 301 in Pretty Pond or a, a wire road in East 54. So can we look at, how can we look ahead with these projects and try to get projects going before we, these things all come online? And how can we pay for them?
Yes, you did speak with me about that and a very good comment point. And again, this all ties into the meeting we have next Wednesday with Kim Lee Horn. We're gonna, we've identified some priorities of the hotspots map and the one hotspot zone by the shopping centers are priorities. And yeah, part, part of that discussion, some of these projects, you know, there'll be a, need a turn lane and/or a roundabout we're putting in. Those are simple, probably don't need to do a lot of data analysis, but on larger scoped areas or corridors, we want to probably have them do some data analysis. So we've already had that discussion that we'd like to look at the Geiger Road corridor. And again, we feel like with the left and right turn lane at Geiger and Island, that that's probably okay. The, the, the townhome project with the cottages is going to have turn lanes on, on Geiger Road. And we're getting new turn, we're going to actually have turn lanes on Island Boulevard, which you don't have right now going into the Y and the, the cottage, the village there. So that's going to make a difference. And, and again, you're, you're going to have, you got Massey Road there, you got Island Boulevard. Now you're going to have an access onto Geiger Road. So again, having three ways in and out helps, really helps disperse those trips. But yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at the, the traffic.
Because I think if we look ahead to what everything will encompass, then we're not doing three different traffic studies at three different times for three different projects. Or we're told one small, too small, we don't even have to do a traffic thing, you know? And I think they all contribute and add to it so that it all should be looked at.
And, and that's why, even with the new standards, some of these projects, we, we, they're, they're still de minimis. And a lot of it, of course, is the methodology. And if you have three or four ways to get in and out, that really redistributes the trips for the new developments so that can throw it into de minimis. That's why we're going to take it on ourselves where we know the issues are, identify them, prioritize them, get them to design, engineer and construct the improvements.
Developers can help, can help bear some of the costs associated with that.
Yeah, because Todd, when we talked about the hotspots, one of the things we, we discussed, we gave ourselves that for the health and safety, that we can look at that, even if, like you said, it doesn't require it, we can still require and look at it. And then again, as you stated, where we can get help from the developers on those types of, types of situations. Okay?
It's on the plan. It's in the books.
Right, so I just want to, while we're in discussion, is anybody from the audience signed up to speak to this item? Because I'd like them, for them to go ahead and speak now instead of wait until after it's over with. So at this time, I'm going to give the citizens a chance to, and remember, when, when you come up, when we call your name, when you come up, repeat your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes to make your comments. So, okay, Ms. Hellman, could you, you have a list there? Okay, okay.
My name's Judy Sibley and 37540 Geiger Road, Saffron Hills, Florida, 33542, 1864. I'll add that in. We have lived on the property right next door there for 56 years. There are gopher tortoises in the back of our property. So I'm pretty sure there were gopher tortoises on the Maggard property, possibly the other property. So that's a concern, one concern I have. The other one, I'm looking at this pond in the back. It's a low point and it looks like it goes all the way over it. Is it, are we going to have flooding concerns if we do have water? Has anyone looked at that? Because it looks like it's different on the map here than on the map there.
Okay, well, I think, they haven't even gone to engineering stage of this yet. And obviously the tortoises will have to be addressed. I mean, they can't get around that. And then as far as flooding, that's something in engineering and there'll, there'll be a lot of discussion and engineering involved on that too. Just not at this point yet.
Okay, well, the main things I was going to bring up is the fact that the traffic on Geiger Road, the water concerns, because that's going to be a lot more housing there. It just, it almost looks like dog kennels lined up for all the pups. I know, I know I'm shortchanging it, but it does, it doesn't look attractive at all. And Wedgwood is attractive. If we could have something like that in that area, it'd be so much nicer rather than housing units that look like they're going to turn into an eventual tenement area. Because, and what, what do we have that says this isn't going to happen? That they're not going to turn into rentals?
Well, that was one of the questions I brought up to try, see if we can address that in some manner, that it doesn't turn into rentals.
That is a big concern.
Right, you're right. I understand.
Because we have rentals down one side of our property.
Yeah, I understand that.
To use our land to dump on. So those are the two things, because I don't feel like, I feel like you've addressed Geiger Road, whatever they're going to do to it. But I don't know how they're going to do much, because it's just a two-lane road and that's all there is to it.
Yeah, and, and that's what we're trying to work through right now. That's all the discussion. We're trying to work through that.
But I think you really need to put an emphasis on the rental thing. That is a big concern. Plus, I hope they're going to have some trees. We have lots of them.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Sibley, for your comments. Ms. Hellman, is anybody else signed up to speak?
There's no one else signed up to speak.
Would anybody like to speak to this that may be here for this? Okay, and again, thank you very much, Ms. Sibley. And I, I think you see that we were already starting to address some of those things. So hopefully, and, and remain in the process as it goes along, because it'll be back for the planning commission again and so forth. Okay?
Yeah, for a game fish commission, they issue permits for gopher tortoises. That has, they, they actually have a lot of protection, so yeah, just can't go in.
President.
Todd, do they, I'm sorry, do they come in and check that?
Yeah, environmental surveys done and for any gopher. And it's very common in Saffron Hills to have gopher tortoises. It's not unusual at all, so it's very typical to have to deal with that.
One more. Todd, to me, I don't, is there any room at all on Geiger for any turn lanes?
Well, that'll have to be looked at again, once we get that survey done. That, that's the key to all, anything you ask about the road, we need that survey done and the county's working on getting that surveyed. Once we have that survey, then we can look at where the road's going to go, the right-of-way that's associated with that, where the multi-purpose sidewalk trail goes. All that'll be, be looked at along with that as well.
They would have to, the turn lane should be on their property and, and in. Now, this entrance doesn't, I mean, the other property, even if we wanted property on the 30, that would provide for that. This would be pretty hard, I would think.
It, it's right-of-way constrained. And again, once we have that survey, I think this, the city will meet with the county to, to look at how to best orient that road, leave enough room. And maybe the sidewalk and the trail has to get a pedestrian easement across people's property in some areas. You know, that's always a possibility. The other thing I, I failed to mention, what I like about the plan is you, you have to the right there, some large lots, single-family residential home sites. If you look at the proposed concept plan of the property we're just looking at tonight, the three acres, those units are all pressed back quite a ways where they're not up along Geiger. So, you know, when you drive down Geiger Road, really all you'll see is the, the entrance row, nice landscaping where the units are pushed back quite a distance, maybe 50, 60 feet from that back edge of those homes that are along the south side of Geiger Road.
And Todd, you said on the west side there, you said it would be a 30, more of a 30-foot. Is there some discussion already of some sort of buffering? Whether it's a screen or trees or landscape?
Yeah, we just generally have discussed, again, it's not a part of this project.
Right.
Just the three acres, but yeah, we let them know. And in their concept plan, they showed additional width there to accommodate that, yes.
Okay.
President, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, thanks. So a couple of the concerns in Wedgwood is on that west side and there are retention ponds all along that back. It's not showing that here, but there is retention pond that whole length from about the second road back. So that, that is an area of low-lying where it already has a lot of water. So there may need to be another retention pond on their side, because we don't, in Wedgwood, we don't want it poured over into that retention pond, because that is right up to the homes, just to be honest with you. So that's been a concern in Wedgwood for sure. And the other word that I keep hearing is continuity. So when you look at this and you look at this overlay and you, you look at the, the things that it's touching, there are no townhomes. There are no, the, the Sibleys' property is, is a single-family home on 20 or so acres. I don't know how many acres you have.
We have a total of four with Allison's property.
Right, okay. Four and a half with yours. And, and, you know, obviously Wedgwood is single-family homes. Across is mobile homes. So that's a, that's something that's been a concern of the neighborhoods and the people that live there for sure is, is this suitable for townhomes in this area? Is that taking away from compatibility with what's already there? So that, those are the things that were brought to me after the meeting that we had with planning commission for sure. So I don't know how that's looked at. I don't, that's, that's above my pay grade. I don't understand all that. But how, where is that fine line of where we decide townhomes are, you know, able to come here as opposed to single-family homes or, you know? I don't know that, so you guys know that stuff better than me. And, you know, obviously there's a lot of homes that, there's just one home on the land. And there are a lot of trees here for sure, a lot of trees, so.
Okay, and I think you're probably addressing more the, the bigger project. But for this particular 3.2 is just that, what is it? What'd you say it was? Couple acres?
Three acres.
Three acres? Very similar to what Rodney presented, same thing, just on the other side of the road, pretty much. But it does, we did have to talk because of the tie-in to 14th Avenue and all that, so that all this part of that, yeah.
So just so people could be aware of that.
Go ahead.
Is Wedgwood a PUD?
Yes. Yes, it's a PUD.
And these unit, Wedgwood, you said, has six units an acre and this will have about seven?
About 7.2, I think. Again, it could be less, depending on how the drainage all works out.
Right, right.
And tree preservation, you know, that.
Yeah, I drove down there the other day down Wilson.
So it's a little difficult to say at this time, again, with the illustrative rendering.
Oh, yeah, and I think it is, the mayor made a good point that there, you know, it's not really compatible to that, but it does make me think of the island townhomes on Massey Road. Now, that's a nice development in a kind of a mixed area as well. So you can see how it can go, but, you know, I just, I hate these illustrative purposes. Only things I think they distort what you're doing and it, you know.
We probably shouldn't include them. We probably shouldn't include them.
I mean, yeah, it, it just gives you a false sense of what's there and it, and you're against it walking in the door, so.
Understood.
Okay, does anybody have any more discussion on it? Because I think you're looking for consensus, the same as the other project?
Same thing to go to first reading of the ordinance. And again, I'll meet with the county to talk to them about some formalization of the Geiger Road improvements and dates.
It's the three acres and the rezoning to R3. And it, it's, what's it zoned in the county, R9?
R, it's rez nine on the future land use, so it'd be allowed.
Still a benefit, if it were developed in the county, it would still be worse than this.
Yeah, well, potentially up to nine units per acre, so.
Well, but we talked about the fact that once you start deducting for required amount of drainage and preservation of the trees per the ordinance, they're not going to get that.
All right, I'll.
Yeah, and I would be too, and I, I don't know.
I'm right where I was on your end.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
But I wouldn't mind having a meeting with you gentlemen. I would like to do that. We'll set something up. I'll give you my number. Thank you.
Can I do that one more question? Are you counting that lake area as one of the, of some of the acres?
Come up to the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Are they counting, are they counting the lake area as the acreage? Because actual.
Yeah, yes, it is. It's the gross acreage. And unfortunately, I'm, I'm kind of with you on that. I, I do the same thing. I said that on other projects, but, but yes, it is the gross acreage of everything.
Are they going to have houseboats?
Well, you might be giving them some ideas.
You know, they're shallow retention, yeah.
So, yeah, it, it is unfortunate that, that's what it's, okay. All right, so Todd is up for 3.3.
Want to use the clicker or?
Yeah, let's.
Todd and Rodney's.
Okay, we'll go, this is the last item we're reporting on from our last planning commission meeting. This applicant has submitted a request for a PUD amendment associated with property. It's located on both sides of Chancy Road. Maybe we can bring up the, should I do it? Okay, there we go. Thank you. Both sides of 39, both sides of Chancy Road and east of 39, as you can see on the, the rendering that's on the screen. The city previously approved a PUD, Plan Unit Development Master Plan. That was back in 2021 under ordinance number 1417. It included mixed use at the northeast corner of Chancy Road and 39. Nothing's happened on that property, as you know, yet. Single-family and multifamily residential on the south side and just west of the railroad. That you probably do remember seeing a single-family and multifamily townhome project that came through. That's in the work. I believe it's with Lennar. And then we had the, the planned commercial at the southeast corner of State Road 39 and Chancy Road. So the current master plan has standards in it and I'll go over those real quickly here. The master plan currently is approved for 25,000 square feet of commercial use, 150,000 square feet of mixed use and 80 multifamily and 138 single-family units. So the petition for this PUD amendment, so if they want to amend the PUD master plan, they, they submit their request and we bring it through the process. And that's what we're doing. So that amendment that's been submitted is for the development primarily of the commercial parcel there at the southeast corner. That's the area in red there that you see, corner of Chancy and 39. And is originally planned for commercial. They're proposing a indoor storage facility with some maximum heights and we'll get into that in a minute. And as an, so with that, there was height limitations on the commercial, so we'd have to amend the PUD master plan to, to allow what they're proposing to build there. There's also some other minor things like streetlights in the residential area shall be operated, maintained by Streetlight District, HOA or CDD. And also the access point for the commercial parcel got moved further east. And that was a requirement of DOT in Pasco County. So we're making those necessary changes, recommending those changes on this PUD amended plan. plan. There's two renderings that we'll show with different architectural heights and elements. Here's just a layout of the plan for, and I'll, I have it in here, but I'll go ahead and say it now, that this, we do currently have a moratorium for indoor storage facilities. This was submitted prior to that, so that's the reason we're considering this as part of the PUD master plan revision. Here you can see, again, for illustrative purposes, the indoor storage facility at the southeast corner there. The access got pushed further to the east there, as you can see. That's always a good idea, even though this won't generate a lot of traffic trips with an indoor storage facility. You can see there's a wetland on the far east side and a proposed pond abutting that wetland area. Probably the next slide. Here's to blow up that, oh, back to that, I wanted to say, here's, we've asked for, and they've obliged by some additional efforts on the landscape buffering plan. Couple of things I'll point out there, right at the corner, you can see a little purple area, we've asked them to allocate an area for Zephyr Hills Gateway Monument sign. What we're thinking on that, this is the gateway, in our minds, to the industrial corridor. And we thought, we haven't done it yet, but one of the things we've talked about is have a name for the industrial corridor here, we can put some signs for that. So, they're going to dedicate a space for that, and we'll have to figure that out still, but, and then you can see on the landscape buffering along Chancy Road, we've increased that. You can see the trees there in the bottom left-hand corner, trees on a thirty-foot spacing, of course, appropriate type of trees, shrub row, shrub row, and then thirty accent plants for every hundred feet. And then we're also showing a multi-purpose trail. We have plans for a multi-purpose trail on the south side of Chancy Road here, it's going to carry over to the Tibbetts property, and then, you know, hopefully, further continue, go east. We're proposing potentially some rain gardens, that's just an alternative way, more green way to do retention. In addition to their pond, it makes the pond area a little smaller, and with the rain gardens, you can put the appropriate type of aquatic vegetation, little bit of greener way to do retention, so just wanted to share that slide with you. Next slide. Here's a rendering of the building, and you can see the design and architectural elements, the height here, and we had two renderings. One had, didn't, is just straight across the top, but didn't have the parapets at the high points there that you can see in here. We have renderings of both, but staff and the Planning Commission has recommended those points there to add some additional architectural detail to the buildings. They've already run this through the FAA for, you know, of course, the airport runways and get a permit for that. Next slide. Here's a rendering. We're very pleased by how the architectural elements work with this building. Very attractive-looking building, will have some very good landscaping, and I think the applicant worked with us really well to make this a standout. We identified the need, this kind of very focal point at this intersection of thirty-nine and Chancy, it's our gateway to industrial corridor. And some of the things that we talked about this, that we liked about an indoor storage facility, at this busy intersection of thirty-nine, Chancy, we all know what that's like, this isn't going to generate a lot of trips. The other thing we'd like now, how we're looking at things, is not going to generate a lot of water demand either, yet it's going to really add.
A public safety.
Pretty significant tax base, by the way this thing's getting built, and just in general, so those are a few things that we looked at. Some of the other issues we looked at, from a compatibility, from a height standpoint, you do have similar height-related buildings in the Copeland Industrial Park with some of the industrial buildings there along Copeland Drive. They did work with us. Originally, it was a taller building, we did get them to bring the building down, so that was something they also agreed to. We felt like this height, as shown, was tall enough for this location from a compatibility standpoint. So, yeah, with that, Site Plan Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommended for approval of this. We do have conditions, there were original conditions with the original PUD master plan. Their conditions are shown as an attachment, they've been entered into the record, and they have to do with the proposed height and the allowances to allow this type of use in the C2 designated area, the PUD. We went through that kind of quick. We also have the applicant, David Fleming, who's representing the applicant here, try to answer questions, or he can come up.
Well, so what we're looking here, we're changing the PUD so they can change, that was going to be commercial and it's going to be this.
It still falls under commercial.
Well, it still falls on commercial, correct.
Yeah, just the definition and standards in the PUD master plan have to be changed.
Right, because in my mind, and I like the, I like the idea of putting that sign there, because that is our industrial corridor, and it's now starting to take off for what we want it for, and because of the, you know, the property to the east, you know, with that manufacturing plant and all, all the things you said, not a big water user, not a big traffic, I mean, is there potential for them to come back again, maybe in the future, and want to do some more commercial-type ventures instead of even residential where it's already residential? Because as the industrial area takes off, maybe it becomes more valuable for that.
We would certainly encourage that, and the PUD could be modified.
Right, so it could be modified again, in other words, that's what I wanted to make sure that we could do that if.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, and the other question, or comment that was brought up at the Planning Commission, I didn't bring up, is, they wanted to make sure it looks like this. So, I got with the applicant, said, we'd like to include this, if you decide to move forward with the PUD amendment, to include this as an exhibit, that's a part of the ordinance and the amended conditions that requires them to build a building that looks just like the rendering that you're seeing here.
That's not illustrative purposes, I'm correct.
That's right.
Bill Live, Drew.
I don't think we need to talk about this anymore. Mr. President, if I may, I think we have a storage, request for a storage facility, if, in fact, they build those residences, they're going to need to have a place to put their stuff. It's, you know, basically, there's no significant impact to potable water resources, no strain on our roads or public safety, and it's pretty darn good-looking, and for me, I don't need to talk about it anymore, I'd approve it.
Now, do we?
This is just, again, a planning report, we're just looking for a consensus for the city attorney to draw up the ordinance for the first reading.
Mr. President, like Council President Burgess said, I like projects that aren't going to use much water, and it's going to be very little traffic, especially in that area, because it's extremely busy all the time. And this project, we're just talking about just the storage.
Yeah, correct, it's the primary change, the PUD amendment is related to this product, yes.
Okay, I agree with Councilwoman Wocleson, I think, I think we all do, for all the reasons stated, so.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Todd, thank you, Rodney. City Attorney's Report, I will.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, I have business item four point one. It's the first reading of ordinance number one four eight four dash two four, ordinance of the city of Zephyr's Florida, related to medical marijuana treatment centers adopting findings of facts, providing for definitions, imposing a temporary moratorium on the opening of any new medical marijuana treatment centers, providing for severability, repealer, and an effective date.
Okay, counsel for discussion?
How many, it says here that there's, we have an adequate number, how many are there? I think there's two?
Five.
Five?
I'd have to get with Todd to see for sure.
It's five, I thought there was only two.
Oh, no.
There's one there, there's one up by the CVS.
Where are the others?
Right, around North Avenue there.
There's smaller ones that have come in, so, yeah.
It's a moratorium, once before, to research how we wanted to handle those, and then during that, we were kind of preempted, and the state has essentially said that you can regulate them essentially the same as you do any pharmacy, or prohibit them, and staff wants to look, take some time and research what some of the other cities have done with regarding to an outright ban, because we are at a point where you can't really control what neighborhoods and what, what different commercial areas they can or can't go into, and based on the number that we have, staff wants to take some time and reassess our position on them as a whole. So, that's the purpose of the moratorium. And if staff determines that they want to recommend an outright prohibition, you know, that'll come back before you with a formal ordinance on that particular issue. This is just a temporary moratorium, so that we can flush those issues out without the risk of more and more coming in during, in the meantime.
Matthew, what's the, what was the timeline on this moratorium?
Twelve months.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought. And I think it's not a bad idea, because, you know, we got recreational on the ballot coming right up, so I think we need to take that into account as well.
Yeah, I think that's something planning will look at, and how to address that and be prepared for that, if that passes. I don't, I don't know the implications of what, how that will affect medical marijuana treatment centers, but we'll need.
But it gets time to look at all that.
Be prepared to look at all that.
Right, right.
You said we could out and out-ban it if we wanted to?
Yes. Under the statute, you can prohibit them within the city, but you can't, you either put a prohibition on them, which the ones that we have would be grandfathered in, just if, if the use changed, they wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't stay with the land. But you can't, there's not a lot you can do with regards to regulation. It's either let, permit them or not permit them, but, you know, I think we just want to pause any more coming in, because I think there's certain areas that the city, we don't want them in. And though, you know, we can't prohibit them from downtown or see her here, different things.
But I agree.
So, we're going to consider, you know, the option of banning them completely, but we want to do our due diligence and thoroughly look at everything, and not just do it on a whim. We think a moratorium's appropriate to put a pause on any future opening of these centers.
One more thing, and while they're looking at this, they're also going to take into account, we have a lot of schools in the city limits. Are we going to be looking at that as well?
This is medical marijuana.
Well, and this is not, this is what he's saying, is that we can't, we can't regulate that, so either it's all in or we're all out.
They can be at any commercial district, I can't. Our, our, our C2, yeah, so, you know, they couldn't move on to Ninth Avenue and open up next to the school, it's residential here.
Okay.
So, there only can be, I think we have to consider that these provide health care and a service to people, too, so I don't want it to be totally a negative impact on medical treatment center.
Which is, is the definition in the statute of what we commonly refer to as a dispensary, but.
I know people who use medical marijuana, and it's helpful to them, if they have arthritis, if they have fibromyalgia, different things, so I think, you know, we can't just go into this and say, this is a total negative thing, and.
I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that.
And I think that's the purpose of.
I was just worried about the schools.
And I think that's the purpose of the moratorium, so staff can get with each of you individually and do some research on how to handle it, because I know that there's certain areas that staff would not want these facilities to go, but right now, we can't do anything else, but.
It's pretty well-regulated, you have to have a Florida state ID, you have to go to a doctor, you have to have prescriptions. It's not like you just walk in off the street and pick up whatever they give.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the other thing, too, is that if, in fact, the ordinance or the law passes, then it gives us time to figure out what are we going to do about recreational use and where those are located, so that's.
Right, because we want, we want to look at, make sure it's legitimate, you know, like you said, a medical, we also, what happened with the pain management things throughout the county years ago, we don't want to just run into that kind of thing, too. So, I think, I think what you're doing is the right way to approach this, and we do have five in town, for a town our size, I think that's, people, that's a pretty good amount for them to get to for right now, so, I mean, and it's one you do need action on, unless there's further discussion.
I move to approve ordinance number fourteen eighty-four dash twenty-four, medical marijuana treatment centers moratorium for a period of twelve months.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve ordinance number fourteen eighty-four dash twenty-four on the first reading, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Before you, next meeting for a public hearing as well.
Right, okay.
Next item I have is business item four point two, Municipal Association of Pasco meeting. My interpretation of the law is that when we're going to get together with other, yeah, with council members, with other, you know, local government boards, that needs to be approved at a public meeting, so I propose the first reading of Resolution number eight two five dash two four, Resolution of the City Council of the city of Zephyr's, Florida, authorizing City Council of the city of Zephyr's participate in a joint meeting of the Municipal Association of Pasco to discuss matters of mutual interest and providing for an effective date. This would be for the MAP meeting planned for July twenty-fifth of this year in Newport, Virginia.
Counsel?
Approve Resolution number eight twenty-five dash twenty-four. Second.
Motion to second to approve Resolution eight twenty-five dash twenty-four on the first reading, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you, Matt.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right. We've come to the portion of the meeting for citizens' comments. Again, citizens have, if you have any comments to make, you'll have three minutes to make those comments, and you need to have signed up with Ms. Hillman and state your name and address for the record. Ms. Hillman, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Brad Bush has signed up to speak.
Repeat that name again?
Brad Bush.
All right, I know you have to repeat your name and address for the record.
Brad Bush, four nine two five twentieth street. I want to start by saying thank you for the council for allowing me to speak. I moved to Zephyr Hills in 2020 and fell in love with its rural and small-town feel and natural beauty. During COVID, along with a lot of our downtown community, I became more active with gardening and DIY projects. I had my daughter in 2021 and dealt heavily with supply chain issues and growing consciousness of what we are putting in our bodies. This has pushed me, along with the majority of my neighbors, to take a more active role in growing our own food and becoming more self-sufficient and locally oriented. I know back in June of last year, the city proposed ordinance fourteen sixty-two dash twenty-three to set clear and fair guidelines for backyard chickens, and regrettably, the ordinance was not approved. I want to start by saying that the rules and guidelines proposed by that ordinance, as written, are very detailed and address most, if not all, of the concerns that were placed last year during the public hearing, and it's by far one of the most strict guidelines placed by any local municipality in our area. For example, Dade City's chicken ordinances allows up to six hens, City of Tampa allows up to ten, and City of Lakeland doesn't restrict the numbers at all. I urge that the council reevaluate and approve an ordinance to allow backyard chickens. Our city already has a fairly sizable population of wild chickens, so most of the nuisances and concerns that come with chickens are already present. This most recent trend isn't anything new or a fad, our country has a very rich history of backyard chickens, and since our country's founding, has been countlessly proposed as a solution for supplies. for supply chain shortages during war times, economic unrest and natural disasters, I'm sorry, I missed my spot, and even used by some governments to reduce food waste and as a form of pest control, for example, in 1918 during World War I, the federal government even, even went on an ad campaign in newspapers through the USDA saying Uncle Sam expects you to have hens and raises chickens, two hens in the backyard for each person in the house will give a family, or will keep a family and fresh eggs, during World War II, the citizens growing victory gardens, one of the biggest pillars of which included chickens for their eggs, meat and the nutrients their droppings added to the soil, we are currently seeing inflation skyrocket, basic necessities and staples like milk, eggs and bread and constant outbreaks of disease in our nation's beef and poultry supply, that is forcing whole herds and flocks to be culled, culled to avoid spreading, which has caused eggs, chicken, beef, turkey and a lot of other prices to skyrocket in the past few years, I believe with reasonable limits, along with clear rules and regulations that are outlined in that ordinance, we can preserve our small but actively growing town feel while also providing expanded rights to our citizens, from an economic standpoint, I believe this will help support many of our local feed and animal supply stores, along with growing our local supply chain and promoting a bigger sense of community, thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Bush, first of all, thank you for your well-thought-out comments and a lot of what you said made a lot of sense and I, I don't think that, you know, from time to time, and we did reject that about a year ago, right?
I tried.
But, but there's nothing wrong with bringing it back up and, and having further discussion because time's even changed just in a year. So, I, I mean, and I think, I think part of the problem with the chicken thing was because of the wild chickens is really the, is part of the, you know, the negative aspect that, you know, everybody's kind of looking at, but I think, again, you had, you brought a very good point and I, I mean, it's something that we could take a look at again, you know, I mean, I don't know what the process is, we get with the city manager when he comes back and, you know, just maybe discuss it further or something.
Let me ask a quick question if I could, please, in, in neighborhoods where you have deed restrictions and they don't allow them, we're really talking about areas that are in the kind of traditional downtown neighborhoods and things like that, so, you know, my only concern would be, one of the, one of the reasons I remember that we rejected it last time was that the wild roosters get into the backyards and they, and they create, you know, new chickens and without, you know, so, and, and then we end up with, you know, people let their, let their chickens go and it kind of exacerbates the problem, I think that's the reason why, that, at least that's the reason why I think I voted against it last time, so I think that if we do it, we should just have some regulations as it relates to.
Yeah, you brought up some, you know, points and, and I think, and that's the same thing with me too, and then you're right, there are certain, I mean, you know, we have HOA's and things like that, they're not going to allow them, so it's still, it's still going to be a small, smaller area in which you think, but it's, it's worth looking into again and I thank you for bringing up, and like I said, you had some good comments on the two for us to think about.
Absolutely, thank you, I definitely agree, it is definitely a two-part system of making that ordinance work, it's not just the city enacting the ordinance, it's also code enforcement enforcing it and then residents abiding by it and not abusing the system.
Right, because I'm pretty sure if, if everyone was doing the way you look, approaching it, it would be fine, but we know what happened with that, so.
I think, I think part of the problem with the wild chickens actually is that the fact that we don't allow chickens because people are using them as, they're chickens, but they're like, oh, they're wild, they're not mine.
Yeah.
They just lay their eggs here at night and leave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Appreciate it.
Laurie, has anybody else signed up to speak?
There's no one else signed up to speak.
Okay, all right, then we have mayor announcements.
Chair Speaker again, Mr. Bush, thank you for coming, we emailed back and forth and I told him he should come and talk to you guys because he had very valid points and, and as you'll remember, our code enforcement officer that came, he was, he was really wanting us to push that, so I just wanted him to bring back those points to you and I appreciate you doing that, it's, it's a great thing, so I just wanted to thank him on that.
Else?
Nope.
All right, city manager was not here, so we'll skip by him, city attorney?
I'll just comment on the chicken ordinance, I actually had to look into this for a, a different issue not too long ago, and Hillsborough County and City of Tampa both have ordinances permitting, permitting chickens and their experience, I think, is that it reduced the number of wild chickens because people are actually then forced to keep their chickens on their property instead of chickens just running wild, but also there are restrictions on the number of chickens you can have and then also not having male chickens, roosters, you know.
They're noisy.
They're, they're the ones that cause the noise and the nuisance and, and I think that's common in an egg operation even in, when it's, you know, a commercial operation is, is you just have the hens, so, if you direct us to, to do that, I have some, some language from some other jurisdictions that I did not have at the time we did it before, so I was just going to add that.
And so it's, it's a conversation worth having, for sure, anything else? Matt, have anything else?
No, nothing else, sorry.
Okay, city council, I'll start with councilwoman Wilkerson.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Proctor?
Well, I want to thank the city staff, Todd and all your people, I know you all work very hard and don't ever take it personal when I stand against something that you guys put before us, you know, we all have our own opinions and such, but I appreciate your hard work because you put a lot of effort into this and I just didn't want you all to take it personal, but that's all I got.
I just want to try to set up a date for a workshop, the, the night of the 22nd, we have the CRA, we have what we expect, what Billy expects to be a larger agenda, and then we have to set the millage rate, so we were talking about maybe on Wednesday or Thursday, the 17th or 18th, to have a budget workshop, he didn't want it on Monday, that's his first day back and he'll need a couple of days to get presentation ready and everything, so.
The 18th would be better for me.
18th, I agree. I'm good with the 18th.
I can't do it.
Can't do either date? And we don't know about Lance, but, uh.
This is something we gotta.
Can we, can we set a tentative date on it? So you're out either day regardless.
We could do it the day, well, I, I.
Billy just didn't want to do the 15th, the 16th was no good either?
Well, that gives them less time, but the 16th would be, I guess, better than not doing it or.
The following, the following is the 22nd.
22nd, which is going to be a big meeting already.
Which is going to be a big meeting, so the next Monday would be the 29th, that'd be too late, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, because we have to do two.
I could do this.
We could do it the 29th and have a special meeting tied in with the workshop to set the millage rate, I guess.
Because really, how long is it going to take?
They, staff has to present the budget to us and we have to go through it and then I have things that I want to consider and, and talk about, so.
Let me see if I can move, I'll, I'll see if I can move forward my appointment.
16th or the 18th, I could do either one, I could do the 17th, mayor? Well, but he was out for both of them, so.
Well, I could do the 16th.
You could do the 16th.
I could do the 16th, just not the 17th and the 18th.
Yeah, I can do the 16th, can you guys do the 16th, Ted?
I don't want to speak for Billy, I would suggest wait till he's back and also Lance not being here, they didn't talk to him about this.
We could do it tentatively right now and then coordinate with them.
Maybe do a tentative date and then.
Do tentatively for the 16th?
If it works out for him, then it works out for us too.
We could do a Saturday morning, the 20th or something.
Only if he's serving breakfast.
Could we do a, a first choice for the 16th with the second choice for the 18th?
We gotta do it.
Budget's the main thing we.
Yeah, I mean, it's important, it's, it's definitely an important thing.
Pretty important.
And it needs, it needs some time, it doesn't need to be rushed through, it needs some time.
Right, we don't want to rush it through, so.
How much time should we budget, two hours, is that what you were thinking?
There's a concern that we're going to set the tentative millage rate at the second council meeting in July.
Get your name, please.
Ted Beeson, Finance Director, so if the concern is you want to do a budget workshop before the tentative millage rate, usually what we've done is just set the tentative millage rate to be exactly what our millage rate is at the time, that preserves our right to go lower, but not higher at that point in time, so if, if it's to do a budget workshop before the city manager submits his proposed budget, then yes, there, we could go ahead and do a budget workshop, if it is to do like we've done in the past, have the tentative millage rate set in July, at the second meeting in July, the council of the manager submits his budget by August 1st, then we can do as many budget workshops as you'd like, but what I sense is you want to make sure that you have plenty of time to look at the capital projects and the capital projects are in a raw form right now, they've just been submitted, they're in our budget software, but we haven't had a chance to kind of massage them really nice because we've been working on converting our utility billing system and making sure our citizens are served that way, but you want to, you want a budget workshop this next week, we'll, we'll make it work.
But, but you're saying that it would probably be better for you if we, if we were to wait a little longer, you'd have everything and then the city manager would be ready too, I would think.
What about the 29th, if we did a workshop and a special meeting to formally adopt the millage rate, because it doesn't have to be adopted till August 4th or something.
I'm out of town though, last week of July, I'd be, I would be out of town for that meeting for sure, so I wouldn't be able to be there the 29th, I mean, I could do.
What about the, well, the 25th is, what about the 24th, after the council meeting, we do a special meeting.
I could do that.
24th of July is a Wednesday.
Yep.
Again, are you wanting to go ahead and have a tentative millage rate set, I mean, you can set the tentative millage rate at your regular council.
Right, but what if we find that we need to raise the millage rate, I mean, otherwise we're going into a workshop handicapped if, if, if we want to, I'm not saying we do, but what if we want to or need to?
If you want to raise, if you want to raise the millage rate, that's correct, Dr. Spelling, you would have to go ahead and do that.
And I think you're right, I think, I mean, I don't know that anybody's thinking along them lines, but you have to have that.
Not thinking along those lines either, but.
I know, but you have to have that option, I understand.
What if they said, you know, oh gosh, we have to build such and such and we have only 30 days to do it?
You're right, who knows what tomorrow could bring.
Right, I mean, I, I at least would want to see what's proposed before I'm locking in a, one of the revenue sources or flows or.
Worst case, you could set the mill, tentative millage higher and, and then bring it back down.
Right, we can do that, but then they scream raising taxes.
No, I'm probably not.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't want to do that unless I have to.
Yeah, you're, you're right about that, you could, it'll just get the negative thing going right away.
But if staff isn't ready for us, you know, what, I guess, how, how functional will, I mean, how valuable would that be?
But honestly, ordinarily, don't, every time, don't, this time of the year, we have a, a budget workshop, I mean, I'm thinking they should be somewhat ready, right?
Well, this, he's saying that converting from.
Yeah, that's.
The outside to the inside has.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Slowed things down.
It's sapped our resources.
So they've been kind of focusing on one thing and.
We have, we have things in a rudimentary stage, I mean, if the idea is to get together and chat about what we have in the way of capital projects and see if you want to raise the millage rate, okay, I think with the growth that we've had in the community, that millage rate, we decreased it from 635 to 625, it has served us well at 625, I can't see it increasing in the millage.
And what, what's the percentage that our, our tax value's gone up, is that about 15% or?
I think it was 10% that you're like building valuations with.
From the property appraisers estimate is about 10%?
Yes, sir, I can't be held to that, I mean, it's approximate, you've had a pretty good healthy bump, even the rollback rate provides you with $800,000 more of like, say, pretty close to 8 million, so yeah, about 10%, so that rollback rate even provided you with that. The staff will stand ready, if, I mean, if you want to do it next week, we can go ahead and we're just not going to allow like lots of fancy presentations, you'll see raw data at that point in time, I don't need to handcuff you in any way.
But I think you were looking at opportunity to have some input, right?
Well, yeah, we want input, we want to know about what kind of raises we're giving, we want to look at the capital improvement plan that we haven't had for a couple of years.
So, so I think you're right, we'll have to have more in one workshop, but if we were to at least have the workshop ahead of time, have some input and, and kind of look so we could do the millage rate on the 22nd and then we could have a couple more workshops after that, correct?
Yeah, we can do one in August, we could do, I mean, that's no problem, but, I mean, but.
Are you, are you satisfied if they have kind of like I say, like you said, a rudimentary one next week?
Yeah, yeah, I'm very satisfied, but I'm just, I don't want to push them.
Right, right.
We won't, we won't be pushed, we can only do so much.
I mean, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to a Saturday morning, you know, if, if that's what, if that's what we need to do so that helps them out, but like I said, I, I'm good with 16th, 18th, I know we want.
I think the 16th is too soon.
How about the 18th?
Well, Jody and the mayor can't come.
Too, okay, all right.
I liked what Steve said about doing it on the 22nd, wasn't it, did you say the 22nd?
No, I said the 29th. The, the 22nd would be the meeting in which we usually do.
What if we, all right, what if we, now, I know you all work, could we come earlier on the 22nd, like at 3 o'clock and do that before the CRA and then?
I could ban my day so that we can do that, I'll make sure that.
Could you do that?
I mean, I know it makes for a long day, but I think that's probably, probably the better, better way.
Then, would that work for you, the 22nd?
The staff will buy you a Subway sandwich.
And then you guys can buy us lunch, yeah.
Buy us some dinner.
But yeah, maybe if we did it then on the 22nd at 3 o'clock, we could do that, then we can do the CRA, then the council meeting and then we're done.
That would be great.
All right, and then that gives you two weeks, it gives us an ability to look at it and set the millage rate and, and then if we have to come back in August, we come back in August, if we're good with everything.
But we will set that, we'll make a first stab at setting that tentative millage rate on the 22nd after the workshop.
Right, right, and I would imagine you'd set it at the current one and then if something goes crazy, then we can change it that night.
Right.
But we don't want to.
Yeah, I think it, we don't want to rush you guys, we don't want to rush ourselves, it needs the attention that it needs, so I think that, and I'm okay with a 3 o'clock, mayor, is that all right with you?
I know, I know.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, well.
What if it comes out to, all right.
Hopefully it'll be all right with Lance too, and then. Okay, so we're looking at 3 o'clock, July 22nd before a regularly scheduled CRA and city council meeting for a budget workshop.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
I'm sure Laurie will remind us.
All right, did you? Steve, you're in your comments, is that, is that it? That's it? Okay, and I will, I don't have anything tonight either, so I just thank everybody for coming and I'll adjourn the meeting. Yeah, that actually.